All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October Board Meeting for New Hanover County Schools. I call this meeting to order. Sorry, that was not very loud. I would like to invite Pastor Alberto Reza of Roque de Salvacion Church to provide the invocation. If we could all please stand.
I bless everybody. Everybody is okay? Good. invocation of the Lord, presentation, everybody, okay? Okay. My Lord is over here right now. The project, everybody, so it's coming up here for the project, so and I need to see this. Everybody take it out, so my Lord and I need to see this presentation, the project. You blessing everybody, so and I need to see this. For your glory to God, the project right now blazing this country, blazing teacher, everybody, organization, this project, so and I need to see this. Thank you so much, Lord, and I need to see this. Amen. Amen.
Muchas gracias. All right, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. All may be seated. Ms. Bowie, could you please call the roll?
Good evening. Ms. Adams?
Here.
Mr. Wortman?
Here.
Mr. Bowyer?
Here.
Ms. Eastep?
Here.
Ms. Justice?
Here.
Ms. Nichols?
Here.
And Mr. Ravanbark?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve, Mr. Bowyer.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second, Ms. Eastep. Thank you, Ms. Eastep. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Adams? Aye.
Mr. Wortman?
Aye.
Mr. Bowyer?
Aye.
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Ravanbark?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Next item, excuse me, one second, is closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A, 1, A3, and A6 to consider personnel matters and to maintain the confidentiality of personnel records under North Carolina General Statutes 115C-319 and -321, to consult with the board's attorney to preserve attorney-client privileged information, including receiving advice in the cases captioned Dante Murphy versus Bullard and New Hanover County Board of Education, New Hanover County District Court Case Number 20-CV-2400, John Doe versus New Hanover County Board of Education at AL, New Hanover County Superior Court Case Number 19-CVS-2745, Jane Doe versus New Hanover County Board of Education at AL, New Hanover County Superior Court Case Number 20-CVS-1395, and to maintain the confidentiality of student records under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20 U.S.C. 1232G. Is there a motion?
Move for closed session, Mr. Bowyer.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second the motion, Ms. Nichols.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Wortman?
Aye.
Mr. Bowyer?
Aye.
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Ravanbark?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We are in closed session.
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Second. Thank you. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Wortman? Mr. Wortman? Mr. Bowyer?
Aye.
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Are we missing a few? I don't believe those two have been able to rejoin yet.
Okay. We have a majority, so go ahead. All right, shall we move on to the next? Special meeting minutes from August 24th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval, Mr. Bowyer.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Eastep. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Wortman?
Aye.
Mr. Bowyer?
Aye.
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Ravanbark?
Minutes have been accepted. Next item on our agenda, recognition of achievement. And if we could please invite up our Communications and Outreach Division, Ms. Anne Gibson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. The following are the organizations, schools, teachers, and students who we feel honored to recognize tonight. Student Information System Supervisor, Ms. Emily Jones; J.C. Rowe Principal, Mr. Glenn Locklear; District AIG Supervisor, Ms. Donna Sloan; Wilmington Early College High School Chemistry Teacher, Ms. Jennifer Tabor; and our community partner, Work on Wilmington.
Emily, thank you for being so amazing and for everything you do with Power School. To have nine nominators is amazing. In what was written to us about why they nominated you, there were just themes that came out, themes like solving problems, seeking solutions, overcoming obstacles, finding answers, that you're a team player, you're constantly sharing, teaching, collaborating, you present at conferences, you've hosted trainings, and you're continuously generous with your time.
When I was nominated, I was so surprised. I was so happy that my counterparts thought enough of working with me and the things that we do on a whole for the state of North Carolina to actually nominate me for this award. So I was absolutely fabbergasted about it, tears of joy, because I actually, I just, what I do, I don't do for recognition. I do it because I love my students, I love the people that I work with. I've always loved being in education, so it's not a job to me. It is just, it is something that has always been within my heart, and I enjoy coming to work every day.
How do you feel that you're innovating in your role to help the staff and students succeed? Can you give us some examples that you're proud of?
Well, one of the things that I love about Power School is the fact that we can customize it. We look and try and find what works best for our county. I'm all about making the job easy for my teachers and making a job easy for my administrators. When I feel like I've given them something to cut some time out of their day where they can actually spend with their students more, I've accomplished what I need.
She's very selfless with the knowledge that she has, and she's willing to give that to others, and it's an inspiration to me. And I am truly blessed to have known her and been able to work with her, and I'm so proud of her for getting this award.
She wants to know as much about children and how they learn as much as she does about the data system, so she really takes to heart working in education, and we really appreciate that about her and the Student Support Service.
She really loves to create and provide a product and support that works for the needs of what we're doing.
She's so very unselfish, and I know personally that would not be the coordinator that I am without her.
Thank you, everybody, for your heartfelt thoughts. I see some tears, some other folks wiping their eyes, and can see how much you truly care about Emily, and again, to have nine nominators is amazing.
Thank you all. The plaque is gorgeous. It will be displayed. I don't even think I'm gonna take it to my office. I'm gonna leave it here so I can see it every day when I come home. I absolutely love it.
Oh, that's great. Sorry.
Rowe Principal, Mr. Glenn Locklear, has been selected as a 2020 Principal Fellow for the North Carolina Equity Fellowship Center for Racial Equity in Education, also known as Creed. Creed works to reverse the trends of racial inequity by turning thoughts into action. Mr. Locklear will spend the duration of the year focused on abolitionist approaches to education, understanding the policy landscape, and developing projects that unapologetically focus on racial equity. The fellowship includes four regional-focused conferences with access to information and resources to enrich orientation toward solution-based approaches, experimental learning opportunities, and skill development focused on respective corners of the education system, as well as a two-part financial stipend to support professional development. Congratulations to District AIG Supervisor Donna Sloan. Ms. Sloan has been selected to be on the re-envisioning committee for Governor's School. There are 20 people in the state that have been selected to this honor. The North Carolina Governor's School Board of Governors recently established a committee to re-envision the 2021 program in this evolving landscape. The committee is expanding to include a diverse sample of stakeholders for idea generation and comments. Wilmington Early College High School Chemistry Teacher Jennifer Tabor pursued a National Geographic Educator's certification. National Geographic believes in power of science exploration, education, and storytelling to inspire young people to care for our changing world and make it a better place. The goal is to spark curiosity about the planet and the life it sustains, and bring students, families, and educators together to work out solutions to the problems of today and tomorrow. Underpinning all of National Geographic's efforts to inspire and teach young people about the world is a learning framework. This framework outlines the attitudes, skills, and knowledge areas that help students to be effective global thinkers and explorers. It is consistent with the latest educational research and standards and is informed by National Geographic's rich history of work with leading scientists and explorers. Congratulations to Ms. Tabor for earning her certification.
Work on Wilmington is brought to you by the Wilmington Chamber Foundation. Work on Wilmington is organized each year by the current class of Leadership Wilmington. Work on Wilmington brings people together to roll up their sleeves and tackle community problems in just four hours. The results are amazing. Projects that would normally take many times longer are completed in just half a day. Work on Wilmington works in partnership with community organizations and agencies to create meaningful, hands-on service projects that improve quality of life and achieve tangible results. Through Work on Wilmington, together, we make Wilmington a better place to live. Work on Wilmington was initiated by the 2006 Class of Leadership Wilmington, a civic leadership, a civic leadership development program of the Wilmington Chamber Foundation. Leadership Wilmington's goal is to produce creative leaders for our community by educating participants about the community they live in, encouraging them to get involved, and providing the opportunity for meaningful action. Hundreds of hours have been spent by Work on Wilmington volunteers on New Hanover County, on New Hanover County Schools' property, improving the environment for our community's The next few slides will show you a list of projects Work on Wilmington has completed at New Hanover County Schools. Unfortunately, due to COVID restrictions in 2020, some projects were deferred to 2021, and some were funded by Work on Wilmington and completed by school volunteers. Work on Wilmington has completed projects for New Hanover County Schools, pre-case centers through to high schools over the years. Some schools have had multiple projects completed by the Work on Wilmington volunteers. In just the last five years, Work on Wilmington has contributed, Wilmington has contributed over 1,600-person hours from more than 400 volunteers for over 40 projects at 17 New Hanover County Schools. Here are more examples of Work on Wilmington volunteers making New Hanover County Schools a better place for our community's students. Our anticipated Work on Wilmington date is the 24th of April, 2021. Applications are now open, and we encourage New Hanover County Schools, apply. The deadline to apply is the 19th of October, 2020. We hope you will join us and make, join us in making Wilmington a better place to live and go to school.
Thank you for those recognitions. Congratulations to all the recipients. There were some really impressive accolades on there. As far as Work on Wilmington goes, applications through October 19th, and I can tell you, I've been on some of those crews, you can sign up to volunteer as well, so, you know, get out there and work at our schools or at some of our other nonprofit partners, so thank you very much, Chamber of Commerce, for putting that together. All right, next item on the agenda is our call to the audience, and I believe, Ms. Bowie, you are going to be calling up our speakers?
Yes, our first call to the audience is Barbara Anderson.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. I've been watching the school board meetings for several months, and I noticed that on the agenda, we have cleaning on our schools, and I know that Mr. Anderson has worked diligently about supplying our students and our teachers to get ready for when they go back to school. One of the things that the CDC says, though, is that you're supposed to clean all contact points between each person when they touch it. I've been watching all of the meetings. Not once has the podium been cleaned in between speakers. Good leaders lead by example. I also would like to say that I hope, when you have our children going back, that you will realize the amount of time that the teachers will need in order to clean behind children while they're also educating them. It's gonna take a tremendous amount of time, because the priority should be foremost, our children and their safety. And with that, that's all I have to say, except I would love to leave you with some hand sanitizer, because none of you have any, when you've come up here to touch the
Our next call to the audience is remote, and that would be with Sue Cruz.
Hi, Ms. Sue. I'm the grandmother of several of New Hanover County School students, and my question is, is there enough staff to support teachers on Plan B? I can't begin to imagine how difficult it's going to be to teach while keeping children safe. How are you planning on keeping children six feet apart at all times, primarily kindergartners and students with special needs? I would imagine that's gonna be quite difficult for them to manage on their own, even if they only have, you know, five or six or even, I would hope they wouldn't have more than eight or nine kids in their classroom, but to do it by themselves, I think, would be extremely difficult. Thank you for taking the time to hear my questions.
And our next call to the audience is also remote, and that comes from Kim Reagan.
I have two questions. My first one is, will children be disciplined if they decide not to wear a mask once they're in the classroom? How do they plan on removing them while keeping the six-foot distance? And who will be responsible for watching them if the parents refuse to pick them up from school for not being in compliance? Also, my second question is, are all safety protocols in place? Are six, all the six-foot markers on the floor, hand sanitizer and soap stations throughout the building, along with other additional cleaning solutions? I've heard that several of the supplies for the schools have been backordered, some as late as January, and I'm wondering how safe it is for our kids to go back or even for the staff to be in the building? I look forward to having my questions answered, and thanks for your time.
And our next call to the audience is also remote, and that came back from Kim Reagan
Thank you for letting me address the board with my question. My question is, who will be responsible for cleaning the school? There are rumors that it will be the teachers' responsibility to scrub classrooms on Wednesdays and Friday afternoons, as well as in-between classroom walks of teaching while kids are in other locations. Can you confirm that this is not going to be a requirement for teachers and that the maintenance staff will be able to handle that amount of work? I know that the teachers are already stretched so thin, I'm not sure how they're going to be able to plan and check assignments for kids' remote learning if they're also being required to clean their classrooms. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my question. I look forward to hearing the answer in the board meeting.
Our next call to the audience is remote, and this call is from Beth Cruz.
Hi, this is Beth, and my question is for the school board. With the added time to the school day, would there be additional remote learning days so teachers can plan, check work, have time for training, et cetera? Thank you for, thank you in advance.
Our next call to the audience is remote, and this call is coming from Clyde Edgerton.
Yes, my name's Clyde Edgerton. I'm happy to be able to make a statement to the board. As the board knows and administrators know, my several parents and I concern, my parents and citizens 2020 have been seeking an investigation into the Spanish immersion debacle of four years ago. That has been unsuccessful, and the lack of an investigation was due to the actions of Dr. Holliday, Markley, Wilmers, and Wayne Bullard. And the present board and lawyer seems to have taken that up, and Dr. Burns refused to investigate. So there's no longer a request for investigation. We have over a four-period, four-year period completed investigation. We're asking for the board's cooperation in communicating with parents who were on the short end of the deal in a bad way three or four years ago, other students in the fifth grade, and we hope that as we reach out to you, as we're doing now, you will respond in a way, in a cooperative way, so that we can heal some of what happened in the past. Thank you very much.
Our next call to the audience is in person, and Mr. Peter Rawwich.
My name is Peter Rawwich. I have one grandson who attends Murray Middle School. My other grandson attends Ashley High School. I'm also a retired elementary school teacher, and I'm here today because I do not believe the proposed Plan B with its AABB schedule is as safe as the original Plan B, where only one-third of the students would be in their buildings at a time. Given the confirmed 336 cases of children with COVID-19 in our county, Monday, October 12th, is too soon to transition to your current plan. For health and safety reasons, my grandsons will not be returning to their schools and will continue with remote learning five days a week. And although I believe their chances of getting COVID-19 will be less when they're learning from home, I also believe the quality of their learning will be less as compared to those students in the classroom. Their teachers have been well-trained and are experienced in classroom teaching. Remote teaching is very different, and to be effective requires different teaching strategies and planning. Asking our teachers to teach both ways at the same time is unrealistic, as there's been almost no training for them in online teaching or how to do both simultaneously. I also have concerns about the ill effects of extended screen time, which could impact students' vision, sleep, and overall health. Their screen time on Edgenuity, a one-size-fits-all program, does not differentiate between independent learners and students who need additional support, and so is not appropriate for many students using it. And although my grandsons love playing video games, Edgenuity's instructional videos don't hold their attention in the same way. In-person learning facilitates relationships and emotional connections. My grandsons are seated in front of a machine. This clearly isn't a learning experience equivalent to what they would get in their classrooms. I believe all of our students deserve and should receive the best education New Hanover County can provide. We need consistency in the quality of education for every student, whether they're in the building or at home. The people speaking here tonight and those who emailed, called in, or signed petitions represent the community that elected you, and we're telling you that the current Plan B is not acceptable. As opposed to moving blindly forward, I call on you to work with us, teachers, students, parents, and even grandparents, to come up with a better plan. teachers, students, parents and even grandparents, to come up with a better plan. Let's get it right for everyone. Thank you.
Our next call to the audience is remote and that call will be coming from Angela Kaney.
My name is Angie Kaney and I'm here again as a concerned parent and advocate with regard to the plan to reconvene our schools. It would seem we have made yet another change without seeking the input of our teachers. I listened in this morning as my son struggled with the new schedule for school. His teachers, overwhelmed at the constant changes, worked tirelessly to sound as enthusiastic as they could presenting this unnecessary transition that is not in the best interest of their students. By switching middle school away from a block schedule to one where they will be forced to rush through each of their classes, spending six-plus hours a day on Zoom proves excessive even to adults. Not to mention it takes 15 minutes or more for the transition process of getting students logged on with correct passwords and taking attendance. So by the time they're actually in the class, it's over. Factor in the amount of time we have wasted this year just practicing these constant changes and we have lost so much instruction time already. Why can we not simply stick with the plan and work towards perfecting that instead of constantly changing? And now we are faced with the reality that remote learning has been placed at the bottom of your priority list and those students will not receive the same quality education as face-to-face learners because you have not made them a priority. We know that as soon as you shift to Plan A, those students will essentially be discarded and forced into unsafe classrooms or the unpopular choice of the virtual academy. I'd ask, does the word equitable even mean anything to you? Where is our choice? Perhaps you might reconsider that decision. It is likely that we end up right back here, all forced to do remote again when due to poor planning, we must shut down our schools again when COVID numbers rise. I am also disturbed to hear that teachers are being discouraged from addressing board members and senior staff with their concerns and instead directed that their only point of contact should be their principals. Principals do not have the power of decision from Plan C to Plan A. That's yours. And while they oppose the choice, they don't have the authority to keep the block schedule that is currently working because you have taken that from them. I'd also remind you that many of our teachers are parents and all of them community members. So it seems a misuse of power to attempt to silence them, especially when we have quite the reputation in New Hanover County of retaliating against educators and parents that speak out against wrongdoing. These teachers were just as much a part of electing those leaders that sit before us as anyone else and most certainly should have the chance to use their voice. I don't even see how we can move forward with this plan without consulting them for their expertise. We shouldn't need to be reminded, but maybe we do. Teachers report to their principals, who report to senior staff, who report to the superintendent. The superintendent reports to the board and is their only employee. Those school board members were elected by and therefore look to be held accountable by you, the people. Therefore, we should all be able to voice our concerns to those that we gave the power to make decisions for our schools and that includes teachers. So take or give that voice away is a dangerous thing. The choices of late by our school board and superintendent need to be reevaluated and a better plan needs to arise that includes those voices.
Our last call to the audience for the evening is in-person and that will be Amanda White.
Hello, board members. I am actually very excited to talk to y'all today and everybody here because this is actually the first time that I've been able to do this. And as a former student of New Hanover County, this is not what I thought that I would actually be doing at all. And I actually have been in this building once and that was for, or actually it was in the old building, to get a scholarship to go to college and get an education. So I really do appreciate the time today to be able to speak to you. So I am going to get to the point. We sent you an email requesting five things, five very important things to ensure that teachers feel safe, but they know that you're listening. So these points are, the district must commit to staying in Plan B until at least December 18th. Our students and teachers need consistency. And those that are at home really do have the right to a quality education. This is very important. We do not want to leave them behind as we're moving into this new Plan B. Every teacher who returns to school with students needs to be provided with N95 masks. And we do have the funding for it. We can request it from the county commissioners. This is a great opportunity to do that. I know that they want to be able to ensure our safety and the safety of our students so that our schools don't become Petri dishes. Every teacher needs to also be provided with some feedback, some time to get feedback on lessons because this is brand new. And as you've heard from the other calls in, this is where our teachers are struggling the most because they haven't, they don't know if what they're doing is right. For years and years and years, they know the lesson plans that they develop and that they facilitate have been working. They don't know if these are going to be quality ones and they don't want to do a bad job. The staff who are most at risk really need to receive. If they're not receiving that remote request, which I do know that about half of them were denied, they need to have those accommodations that can be provided at the school. So extra accommodations like the plexiglass or the face masks to ensure that they are extra protected. And then finally, teachers really do need to be consulted, not just the teachers of the years or some teachers that don't have the opportunity to get the feedback from a variety of teachers at different schools. So we ask that you keep discussing and meeting with us and having conversations with us so that we can tell you what's happening. The purpose is not to complain, it's just to share information so that we can share, like the Hi-Flex course design. That seems to be very fitting for the condition that we're in. And we know the flip classroom method is a great method, but we do have to develop and we have to, to look at a variety of plans to see which best fits the situation so that our kids at home that are trying to stay safe can get a quality education as those in the classroom. So thank you. I appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you very much to our speakers, both remote and in-person. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is information and we're going to start with our 2020-21 opening and COVID update. We will be welcoming our administration, senior staff to provide a district update on 2020-21 opening under Plan B, option AABB. And we are happy to have Philip Tartt and Carla Turner this evening here with us from the Health Department. And if we could invite you to the microphone, please, for some COVID updates. Thank you again so much for joining us again this evening. We appreciate you.
Well, and, yeah, thank you. And, and, and I would say thank you for having us back from the last board meeting. And really thank you for the services, students. I, I know it's been a daunting task, but we really appreciate it moving forward. Obviously, Carl is here to share some statistics moving forward as we transition next week into our schedule, if you will. And I want you to know that we, as public health professionals, Carl, I've had many discussions about this, really here to help you transition as we move forward, specific to the safety of not only staff, students, but your educational folks as well. So anyway, I'll turn it over to Carla, talk about some statistics and we'll take any questions after that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to present a few statistics. You did ask us at your last meeting on the 21st to, when we came back, to talk to you about what had happened in, in the two weeks between those two. So I will tell you that as of noon yesterday, the total cases that we have had in New Hanover County is 4,633. Our first case was on March 19th. That was our first positive. Of those 4,633, 83 of those positives were in the, in children five to 10 years old. And 169 of those cases were children 10 to 17. And I, I looked back today and in these last two weeks, of that 83 in the five to 10 range, four of them have been positive since the 21st of September. So we've had, four of those 83 have happened in the last two weeks. The 169 cases with the 10 to 17-year-olds, 18 of those have happened in the last two weeks. Those positives have come about. And of those 18, nine fall in the 17-year-old age range. So it's a question as to if those are kids that are in public school or if they have, you know, a late birthday and they have graduated. So that was our biggest, the 17-year-old age group was the biggest number of positives in those two weeks of those. I looked back at our percent positivity rate and for September 13th to the 19th, you can see it was 6.5% was the percent positive in New Hanover County. The 20th to the 26th of September was 5.7%. These numbers wobble just a little bit, week to week because of, when someone is tested for COVID, depending on what lab processes their test, lots of labs in the state and in the nation do electronic lab reporting to our state so they can capture those numbers. There are some that do not. We use a lab in Texas that does not interface with the state. So we have to send those, those results through, through NC Ed's, the state system for the lab to get them. So there's a little bit of lag time. So the, the results from the 13th to the 19th, I feel are more, are a more accurate number for what actually happened that week, the 6.5%. So we'll look to see when the results, when our county data comes out tomorrow, probably, we'll be able to, I can look back and see what the 20th and the 26th actually looked like and if it had waffled up or down any. But that's kind of where we are. I will tell you, on our state Health Department call that we have every Tuesday today, it was shared that, as you have probably seen across the nation, but in North Carolina, we did have an uptick in positive cases in the last couple of weeks. And as you can see, and I wasn't able to break down, I, I can't pull out those, you've seen what we've did in the last two weeks, but it was hard to pull out surrounding counties. You did ask us what surrounding counties have been doing that started Plan B at the first nine weeks. And that's at the bottom of your page. I do want to caution you, when you see the percentages of zero to 17-year-olds, I could not break it down five to 17 because I had to go, those counties didn't have a dashboard where I could pull that type of data, drill down that far. So I pulled from the state website, the NC DHHS website, to get the zero to 17. But please keep in mind, those percentages aren't what's happened since school started. It's what's happened since that county had their first case. So that 16, so in Pender County, that 16% of positives among the zero to 17, that happened, that, that started whenever their first case came in. You know what I'm saying? So it's not in a two-week timeframe. So I don't want anybody to see that and get, you know, get the wrong idea about that. There was also a question about recovered. And of our recovered cases, you can see 78% of our cases have been classified as recovered in New Hanover County. And we, we use the state's formula for determining recovered. 14 days from the date of your test, if you were not hospitalized, 28 days from the date of your test if you were hospitalized. So that's how we go back through our spreadsheet and our data and pull those that we classify as recovered. We do have three school nurse vacancies. We are steadily filling those, continuing to interview and ready to move forward on, on another one of those to get that filled through our process through the county. I do want to just point out, and we said this last time, but the school system, New Hanover County Schools, has been amazingly diligent in following the strong schools, North Carolina Public Health Toolkit to the letter. And we have been through that and through that to make sure that we're able to give your schools, your administrators, your faculty and staff what they need to be successful and safe when the children do return to school. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much.
Yes. And thank you for coming. Thank you for giving this. Now, you were talking about results of tests being reported and you were giving two different sources and then you were talking about lag time. Are there actually cases out there that have been tested and not reported to different agencies that we're aware of?
Well, there may be a few out there, yes. Like what happened, what was, folks that were tested last week, if, if the lab that tested them interfaces with the state system, then those test results are immediately uploaded. Labs that do not interface, they have to manually load those results. I can't speak to the turnaround time for those labs. I know ours get in very quickly from the lab that we use. So the, the number shouldn't be that different. I think that was misjustice. But yes, ma'am, but they, they, they may change a little bit. What I've noticed over the weeks is they, they change by about .1 to .3 percentage points over time and it's usually a decrease.
Are they mandated? Now, they're, all labs are mandated to report this information, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And all positives in New Hanover County have to be reported to the Health Department.
Yes. Ultimately, you'll see a lag in time, as Carla mentioned, but the numbers should reflect the cases that we're seeing at that moment.
School nurse vacancies. Just curious, I know Sunset Park, a couple other schools don't have a, a nurse on site and I know we've said they're going to be covered. Does that coverage involve somebody in the building at all times or does that coverage involve somebody on standby?
Most of the time, we have someone, we have someone that's going to be available by phone, but our other nurses are taking the time to go to those schools and do the same training with their staff and faculty as they are in their, in their homeschool.
Okay, so there, there will be a nurse in the building where there are the three vacancies.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
They should physically be at some point during the week at that school.
They will not, until they're all full, we will not have a nurse in every school while the kids are there, but we will have, when we fill those last three vacancies, we will.
Okay, so what are they going to do in the meantime, those schools without a nurse?
They're going to be able to reach out to either my nursing supervisors or whatever nurse has been assigned. We have, the nurses who are covering those schools, they've been assigned to cover those schools. So they're not having to call around anybody. They know who they can contact, who's over that school for that time.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And how far?
Should be some sharing of duties and that's what we're working on now, along with some contractual obligations, yeah.
Well, how, how soon will it be before there are nurses on site in all, all of our schools?
I cannot give you a definite answer with that. We are steadily interviewing, ready to make an offer to one of those three openings today. We also have a PRN nurse, an as-needed nurse, who's a former school nurse, who will be available for one of our schools as well. So I cannot give you a definite time, it's justice, I'm sorry. Hopefully before, hopefully before, you know, in the next three to four weeks, but it depends on people accepting the offers we give them and then moving them through the process.
And to Carla's, and to Carla's point, there should be at least two of those three schools with the third school being an alternate between, sharing of resources between other schools.
And I know, I just have one more question. Have you seen anything in New Hanover County data over these past two weeks since last we met that would caution you about moving forward with our reopening plan?
No.
Thank you.
Now, last time you had, I guess you'd say a number on the deaths. At this point, have there been any more deaths since the last meeting that you're aware of?
I don't know why I'm trying to memorize this right here. I've got the numbers right now. The, the number of deaths that we have had in, attributed to New Hanover County are 35 and I think two weeks ago it was 32, if I remember correctly. Because I remember you asked a question because it had gone from 29 to 32. And so we're at 35. Yes. And each of those additional deaths fell into, was a citizen who fell into the older age range, along with some underlying health conditions.
Do you have any other questions from board members?
How will the, how will the communication work with, if, if there is an issue in a school with a potential case? How will that communication work? Can you walk us through that? So if you, if you are notified or if we notify you, can you, can you walk us through that?
Sure. And if, I'm going to ask Julie if she will come up and talk about that. We've got a process in place with our school nurses. And so they'll be the ones who are notified. They will work with the school to determine close contacts. They'll work with the, with their cohorts at the Health Department to do what we need to do with contact tracing for the close contacts that are outside of the school. Anything you want to add to that, Julie?
Yeah, I can, and I don't want to get too close over here, get in the little crowd. We do have scenarios that we've discussed with our school nurse supervisors, Carla's and Mr. Tartt's teams, Ms. Turner and Mr. Tartt's team.
Ms. Byron, can you do me a favor? Can you come up to the microphone because for, for those that are in the home?
Sorry. I was trying to, to follow the rules and, and not, I think one night I pushed Tom Benton out of the way. So we have three different communication scenarios. Sorry, I'm just pulling my little, my little notebook, my external brain here. First, the communications, well, let me back up. The toolkit doesn't give precise parameters on how to communicate with families or staff. We, we do know that we have an obligation to communicate those things with our staff and our families. And so what I shared last week in the virtual town halls was that we do plan on communicating those things. As we've been communicating any positives in school buildings, that's communicated to staff through their principal. But the principal gets a template email based on the situation. So we discussed this, we decided that we would be communicating that. And so Carla and her team and I discussed this last week. And the three scenarios would really be that if we have a positive case in the building with no exposure, we would communicate it in that way. We have a positive case, but based on the use of PPE and basically the three Ws, we don't have any close contacts, as they would say, close contacts, and I'm just going to use the, the term of exposure. The other would be if we have a positive case in a building with potential exposure based on on, if this is a person that is using, not using a cloth face covering, but using a shield with additional accommodations. While we know that we're working to meet the guidelines and not creating additional risk, we might actually not be meeting the very threshold of contact tracing. And so those are two different, two different ends of a continuum. Honestly, it's kind of apples and oranges. And then we have a third scenario, or a third kind of communication, that would happen from the school nurse to a particular parent about a particular child that says, okay, so your child is either experiencing symptoms or your child has been exposed, or we believe that this is the case with your particular child. So we've created those scenarios for communications, and those messages are actually drafted in a template form for us to use as needed. Does that answer? And maybe you want me to clarify as well? Do you want me to clarify what I just, Dr. Faust and I are like this? No, I'm just kidding. We have 41 school nurse positions for 45 schools, and it was 40, but we did add on an additional one this year through, and Mayor Hazel maybe need, might need to correct me, through our own budget process, not through the county budget process, because we knew that we needed that with an additional school and given the public health concerns. But we certainly would love to have 45 for 45 schools, but we also understand that our school populations are very different. So they all have an assigned nurse. They're just not there 100% of the time.
I have some questions, but I might, you're going to be speaking in a few minutes about the school's role in all of this notification, correct?
Me? I can certainly answer any questions, but this was our, the health and safety presentation.
I'll wait until then, then.
Oh, okay. No, I think this would be the time, because this was, this was it, yes.
Okay. All right. So you said that the principals will be notified, and who's going to be notifying them? The health department, right? Correct?
Okay, so it's probably a little bit of a communication loop, because actually, when we have folks in the buildings who test positive, the principal's the one that notifies us. So they know that directly from their staff. And all of our situations have been self-report prior to contact tracing and prior to notification from public health. So we haven't had situations where public health has had to reach out to us and say, okay, this is a positive case in your building. Actually, our staff have reported that first. And so when the staff report that to their principal, prior to our school nurses coming back, they were reporting to me, and then I was, you know, getting on my bat phone and calling Carla, and we were talking about, you know, how we were verifying and then how we would communicate. And then when our school nurses came back, they took that role of, basically, the contact tracing within the building, verifying from the lab and the spreadsheet that they have, and then helping with the timeline from isolation, and then kind of going back with the contact tracing and deciding how the interactions were happening in the building and whether additional potential exposures could have occurred, and guiding those folks through that. And so now, the principal alerts me or Dave Spencer or senior staff in general, but they usually come back to Dave or me, and we are cataloging those on a master spreadsheet for the district. But we are also providing the principal with the type of communication. Again, right now, it's only been staff or the children of staff in the remote learning lab, so we're focusing on the staff communication. But we're prepared for that parent and student communication as we move forward. So it's a little bit of a communication loop. Does that make sense, Ms. Justice? I realize I just went all the way around for that.
Yeah, well, this is, this is not a simple thing, and it sounds, I understand the loop. Also understand that, in other words, a lot of this reporting's coming in, in a sense, from different sources, to the nurse, to the principal, the teachers, the staff, they're informing too. So there, I mean, it's a really hard thing to have consistent reporting because of all the different players in this, it sounds like to me. You might possibly have no reporting immediately, or double reporting, and then you have this no exposure notification, something that would not be, that's one of your classifications as far as informing or deciding what's going on. And then the other one about someone, you know, the person's wearing PPP, so it should not be near with no close contact, and then you have the potential exposure. Would that be the nurse that would make those decisions as far as reporting that?
Yes, yes. So as are the nurses, and then they can use their team at public health because they are public health employees, they can use their team of contact tracers or contagious disease, the...
Case investigators, yes.
Yes, the case investigators to support that. But generally, our nurses are able to assess the interactions and then determine how communication needs to happen between different groups, whether a particular group, and so I'll go with students instead of just talking about how we've done it, how we're doing it currently. So identifying in a particular classroom, how that classroom of parents needs to be notified, how the school needs to be notified, because that might be a different communication from the notification to a classroom of parents and versus the entire school. So those are being, I don't want to say dictated, those are being collaborated with, that's a collaboration between the school nurse and the administrator, because the administrator has access to the communication tools, but the school nurse will know what type of communication needs to go out.
So this should be a consistent criteria among, across all the schools, correct?
Yes, yes. And it's a criteria set by the toolkit that's in line with the contact tracing requirements and identifying exposure or close contacts. Yes.
And then the master schedule you keep, or we keep, at the district level, and then we have it, I know we have it here on the Ready, Set, Return site. I'm just wondering, is there a way, I mean, it's all the way at the bottom, and it, it does, I mean, not to complain, I'm grateful for the information. Is there a way to make it a little more user-friendly to, to maybe make the columns a little different, like maybe organize it by, by school cases, and then how it was quarantined or not quarantined?
The particular spreadsheet itself.
Right.
So we have actually been talking about the spreadsheet. I'll look at Ann, our communications head. We talked about the spreadsheet within the last couple of days and clarifying the wording on there, and we understand also that, you know, once we, it's more than just staff, we will want to capture that just a little bit differently. So we can do that. I think we can, and I don't have anything to write with. But if we took categorized by school, or whether it's, did you say whether it's a staff or a student, or something like that?
Well, I guess school, maybe cases, and whether there's a quarantine, or just maybe organizing it a little bit differently so that it is a bit more user-friendly. But I'm just thinking, if we're coming back, and whether there is a quarantine that is needed, I think that information would be a little more helpful and just make it a little more transparent, you know, so everyone knows, okay, this, this was an isolated case, or this was a case where there was a quarantine needed.
Okay.
So just kind of flipping the information around a little bit.
Okay.
And just making it a little more available to the public so they know that, that the information is there. And I would say too, there's a couple of links on here that are broken, or that doesn't lead to anything. If you click COVID-19 resources, at least on my iPad, it says, there's, there's page not found. So if we wanted to just make sure to check all of our links on that page and make sure they're updated.
Okay, okay. I think Anna's already clicking and looking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we've got, you know, if we've got something on here, we want to make sure it's usable.
Agreed. Yep, yep.
So, I mean, there's a lot of good information on here.
Right now, that spreadsheet only captures positives. So it doesn't capture anything about any isolations or required quarantine or anything like that. So I think that's something we can look at. But as of, you know, I'm asking you the same question I've asked you like many times, because I keep asking Carla, and the last time I asked her was last Thursday. As of now, we still haven't had transitions happen in the school building. So none of our cases have led to another case as of current. So that contact tracing does help us with that. And so we know that our isolations have been, you know, within that abundance of caution and have just been that cautionary, but we have not had any positives from that.
Yep.
Okay.
That's good news.
But thank you for noticing the links.
Yep.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. All right. Good discussion. Any other questions from our members that are remote?
I just have one. Are we going to, is Dr. Faust going to give an update a little bit later on where we are in terms of moving towards Plan A, or is this that discussion?
We're going to be talking about Plan B.
We're, we're talking about Plan B.
I'll be giving...
There was, he was going to give, we had talked at the interim board meeting about how, you know, some of the criteria we were going to look at moving towards Plan A, what he's done in the last two weeks to eventually move towards Plan A. We had discussed that, and that was going to be part of the conversation. I'm sure that was talked about at the last meeting.
To my remembrance, it was that we would continue to monitor. I don't have any information on Plan A this evening. Our information is on Plan B. However, we are continuing to...
Dr. Faust, it was very, I made very clear during the last meeting, and you also agreed that it was important to talk about what we were, how we were moving towards Plan A. And that's what a lot of these parents, and even though it was voted that we moved to Plan B, the discussion was going to continue as to how we were moving forward to Plan A. Has there not been any discussion as the numbers decrease? I know they're increasing here in North Carolina, per the information, but they've decreased here in New Hanover County. Has there been no discussion at all towards Plan A in the last two weeks?
The Plan A is still as is, as we stated. It's still to monitor those numbers. We haven't gotten into Plan B in the active of the AABB schedule for us to monitor to see how that's going to affect us.
So Plan A, so what you're saying is, is in order to get to Plan A, we have to have B and Plan B for a while?
We have to be able to see how Plan B works in order to be able to monitor the cases inside of the school to make sure. The Plan A, when we look at the instructional side, that's going back to normal, which we are, we know how to do normal. But we don't know how to do normal with all kids in the building at capacity, with social distancing. That we don't know how to do. We have got to make sure that we are in Plan B with kids in the building, making sure that we're able to successfully move through that building, and that we aren't getting an increased rate on cases. As I stated, I would continue to monitor and update, but I don't remember, you know, maybe, excuse me if I'm, I'm misspeaking, but I don't remember saying that we would have information at this board meeting.
Well, you were going to, my remembrance, again, maybe I'm misremembering, is that you were going to give updates as to how we're moving towards Plan A. We have plenty of neighbors that are going back full-time, including our neighbors to the south, and I believe a couple other neighbors. Instead of just simply waiting to see what our numbers, I would strongly encourage administration to talk to those, those, you know, Brunswick County, and see what they're doing in an effort to kind of move us forward to the Plan, to Plan A. And again, Plan A is a choice for parents, but I was hopeful there would at least be some discussion as to, instead of saying, let's see how Plan B works and figure it out. So realistically, Dr. Faust, we're not going to Plan A anytime soon. Is that correct?
I can't give you a date at this, or a recommendation at this date as to when. As I stated, we will start to look at Plan A, and I, the goal is to get kids back into the building. By no means do we believe that having teachers teach remote and face-to-face is the best, nor is it best for kids to not be in, in schools. But what we also have to consider is those school districts that are to the south of us are smaller than us. And those, percentage-wise, we outnumber them by percentage. So we've got to look at it through, or percentage-wise, and total demographics. So, yes, but we're also meeting, and I'm talking with some of our larger school districts to make sure that what we are doing and what we are all, what they're doing, what we're doing is consistent, meaning, do we have the right protocol in place, not when it comes to the cleaning and all of those things, but do we have the right protocol of how to get kids on the bus? Because we can't put all 27,000 kids on that bus. We don't have that, and we can't run four routes at one time to get kids in the building all at one time, make sure that we are able to dismiss a school. When we have schools that are at 2,200, I mean, yeah, 2,200, and we have buses that may have, you know, 1,600 kids that are riding buses, that's, I don't know how to do that. And I'll say that, and our bus drivers haven't, don't, our bus department doesn't know how to do it. So we can't actually put kids on the bus, you know, for those parents who can transport kids by car, that's totally different. But when we're looking at an equity state, we've got to make sure that we are providing equity for all students. And I get it that some are saying, yes, it's a choice for remote, and some can come, but that still provides an inequity for those who need to be in the building, but we can't get them in the building. I think at that point, we were putting people at a higher risk for being infected if we put all of those individuals on a bus. So again, we will continue to monitor, make suggestions, but when we can find out how to do that, and when other districts are showing us how to put all those kids on a bus, I promise you, we will have something for you. But I don't know if I can have it for you in two weeks.
I understand, and I appreciate that. But just to be very clear, Dr. Faust, when you say 27,000 kids ride buses, that's how many kids we actually have in New Hanover County. They don't all ride buses.
Absolutely.
I know we've, we've talked about, and I understand Brunswick is a smaller county, but in terms of class size, the class sizes are the same. In terms of the actual seats on the bus and what they can do on the buses, that's all the same. In terms of teachers, pupil teacher ratio, that's also the same. So I understand that it's...
The percentages on the bus who ride the bus would be different.
Excuse me?
The percentages of the kids who ride the bus would be different. We would have a larger percent. But we will, we will definitely, I mean, it is not a closed discussion, so I don't want you to think that we're not focused on, we've got to, it's hard. I'll be honest with you. It is, it's hard.
I understand that. I just, I want to make sure that the focus isn't getting stuck like we did last time in Plan C.
By no means is that the plan to be stuck.
Seems like the focus, excuse me?
By no means is that the plan to, to get stuck. I promise you, that's not the plan.
Right. So, and that's why we had talked, that's why I was hoping we would have at least a little discussion, is what good things have happened, or what bad things have happened in the last two weeks, and, you know, where are the numbers going to dictate the move forward?
Absolutely, and so I think you...
I don't believe we need to be until, you know, the second semester in Plan B.
And I think you'll hear some of those as we are presenting throughout. You'll hear some of that communication, but we are, by no means, Mr. Wardman, are we trying not to put kids back in school. And honestly, I'll tell you, I'll say this honestly, I know it's not the fan, but it's hard to do Plan B. It is. Plan A is easy. I'll be honest with you. But Plan B is the one that we know that right now is the safe route. But that's, that's where we are. But I'll tell you, I mean, it, Plan A would, it's like, hey, this is what we do. But we don't think we've got it, we're not ready for Plan A.
Just a quick point of clarification. Plan A is not an option for our sixth through 12th grade students. The governor has not mandated, or has not allowed us to return with that group. It's only for pre-K to five. And I believe, and I don't know if, Dr. Faust, you can correct me, I believe part of the governor's allowance into Plan A mandated social distancing on the bus. So that makes Plan A an impossibility, in my opinion, for New Hanover County schools at this time. Without the allowance to ignore social distancing on those, you know, transportation routes, I don't see how that's even feasible.
I would like to say that I, I mean, I got this stone wall tonight. I never even talking about Plan A. We haven't even got into Plan B and proved that we can do that. And if we can't do Plan B, we can't do Plan A. But I want, I want to get to Plan A as bad as anybody, but we got to prove we can get there.
But Bill, with all due respect, having a, it's important to have a conversation instead of just sit back, like you're saying, and go to Plan B. It's important to actually continue a conversation, especially when the people who we are representing are telling us they want all these different things. So instead of just saying, let's just wait and see until Plan B works, it's, might be important to listen to some of those people that are going to be voting for you.
But David, David, half of them want Plan A and half of them want Plan B. Which one do you want to go to?
You are exactly right. You're exactly right, Bill. And that's why we owe it to them to at least have a discussion, instead of you just saying, I don't even want to have a discussion.
I didn't know, I didn't know we were going to have a discussion. What I would like to do is tell Dr. Faust... What I would like to do is tell Dr. Faust, let's set a date and see if Plan B works. If it does, let's go to Plan A. But we can't get straight, we can't get straight to Plan A.
What's a good date for you, Bill?
I'm, I'm not the superintendent, buddy.
How about we allow the, the presentations and we hear what they have to say, to see how close we've gotten to B, so we can get the students back in the building? Can we do that?
Well, Ms. Eastep, the reason why I asked about Plan A was because I thought there was going to at least be some discussion as to what, I understand what they're talking about, but we're having a discussion now and that's kind of the point I thought of being on the board was to have a discussion with, with people.
I think that one thing we've got to consider too, you know, Mr. Wartman, to your point, you said that you want to know that there's at least conversation going on. There is. I mean, that's what this group is doing every day and that's as they're talking to their schools and they're hearing what they can do. So this conversation is ongoing and I don't think that there's a stopping point and it's not holding or pausing and saying, we're only going here. This is a work in progress every day and I applaud every single school, senior staff, superintendent, everybody that is working in our buildings to figure out how to make this work.
Ms. Eastep, I appreciate that, but that's, that's why I brought the conversation up to make sure that we continue that conversation. Otherwise, I don't think there would have ever been that conversation. But I, I, I agree with what you're saying.
Stephanie?
Yes, sir.
I, I just want everybody to know, I'm in an election and I'm going to do the right thing on the school board, what I think's best for the children and the families, and it has nothing to do with the election.
We know that, Phil. Thank you very much. Appreciate you saying that. All right, on that note, are there any other questions for our health experts that have so kindly come to join us this evening? If not, thank you so much for your time. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item, oh, sorry. We're not going to one yet. Got it. Dr. Smith?
So, good evening and I appreciate the opportunity to provide with you just a brief update from the Teaching and Learning Work Group we are continuing to meet. Our three main points that I'd like to share with you around the work that we've done have been, and this has been since our last meeting, have been around the Virtual Academy, understanding how to modify the services that we're currently providing so that we can better meet the needs of our families. So we're right now designing a survey to gather input from our families about how we can better engage students and ensure that there is strong course alignment with, with the Virtual Academy program. The other areas where we've had quite a bit of conversation has been around the flipped instructional model that the district is implementing. And I'm going to allow Dr. Jackie Jethro to speak specifically around the elementary model and then I'll ask Mr. Al O'Brien to come up and speak around the high school and the middle school model in reference to the flipped instructional model. And what I'd like to share with you, another discussion that we had, is really about the transition in school schedule from Plan C to Plan B. And just to clarify, we've made transitions in the schedule, changes in the schedules for both our high school students as well as our middle school students. And I know that there have been a lot of questions and concerns expressed in regard to that and I'm very appreciative of the families that I had the opportunity to speak with today. They gave me some great insight. We had some really good conversations. One point I think is very important to make is that the schedule had to change regardless because if you are familiar with the schedule, and I think at your stations, you've got a document, they're stapled together, there are three samples scheduled. These are from three of our middle schools within our district. You'll notice that in the first, the very first page, the, almost to the bottom of the schedule, from 12:30 to 2 o'clock, you'll see a portion of the student's schedule that's labeled independent work and office hours. Well, that's what occurs in Plan C. In Plan B, you have to schedule that time because our students are going to be physically in our building, so this can't be unassigned time for middle school students. And anyone who's had any experience with middle school students, you, you understand completely why it has to be assigned. So in order to do that, that time would have to be allocated to what we have created as our social-emotional learning lessons or advisory periods. It would either have to go back into our elective periods or it would have to go back into core instructional time. And so right now, middle schools are operating on an A-day, B-day schedule. I know folks have referred to it as a block schedule, but truly it's more of an A-day, B-day schedule. And so they have two cores per day. So if we allocated that time back in and also understanding that the state requires us to have a six-and-a-half-hour instructional day. So that's the time that we have to provide instruction to students. And, you know, and it doesn't mean that it's the time that we have to assign students to a live Zoom lesson, but it has to be scheduled instructional time for students. So to meet the requirement by the state for the six-and-a-half-hour instructional day and then to make sure that the entirety of the day is outlined for our students, we would be asking middle school students, if we remained on this A-day, B-day schedule, to have core classes that would be about two hours long. And their elective periods would be about 90 minutes in length and then their advisory periods or their social-emotional learning periods would be about 60 minutes long. And if you think about it, so a core class right now in the schedule that the district is proposing is about 60 minutes. And so if you're reducing the number of cores from four to two, then you're doubling the time. So that's where we get the two-hour scheduled core time for, for each student. So students would have two core classes that would be 60 minutes in length. So we would be asking middle school students to remain in a classroom, in a seat, socially distanced from their peers for two hours without any transitions. With the schedule we're proposing, it would provide students with the opportunity for a transition about every 60 minutes. Now, some schools have done it slightly different. Their cores are about 50 minutes because they've had it, the additional transition time. So between 50 to 60 minutes, students, and I'll tell you, I have a middle schooler myself, they need to move. They really need to move. So we would be providing them the option of transitioning every 50 to 60 minutes within their, their schedules. And so we very much understand the challenges that all of these or any of these schedules present, but we also want to make developmentally appropriate for our students. And it does not seem developmentally appropriate to me that we would be asking 11, 12, and 13-year-olds to be in core classes for, for 60 minutes at a, at a time. And so if you flip to that second schedule, this was one schedule of one of our schools. And in here, if you count up the amount of transition time, there's about 80 minutes of transition time. And so again, that's the schedule that's built for their, their Plan C model. And so again, in this schedule, you're only getting about four hours of instructional time. So therein would be another reason why we would need to transition. And their core periods here are only about 30 minutes in length. And so there's so much more time allocated to transition than would be acceptable if we were honoring that six-and-a-half hours. And then the last schedule, and I think this one probably comes closest, and you can see that this middle school was already operating with three core periods. So we had, just across the board in our district, several different schedules and Dr. Faust spoke to it already. We want to ensure equity for all of our students. We want to make sure that every child has access to a high-quality curriculum. We want to make sure that all of our students are scheduled to get the maximum amount of instructional time and that that time is quality and that we're asking them to engage in meaningful instructional tasks. And so I'm very happy to answer any questions that you may have in regards to the schedule.
So I just wanted to simplify a little bit so, you know, so we can highlight the key points. This schedule had to change. The block scheduling, the A-day, the A-day, B-day that our students are doing right now in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade had to change.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And this makes it more equitable across the district? This brings our district middle schools in line to a core set of curriculum?
Yes. It, it, not necessarily the curriculum, but the schedule itself. So it allows for consistency across all of our schools, yes.
Okay. And how many Zoom meetings will our students be engaged in, in middle school every day?
So for me, it's not the quantity, it really is the quality. So what we're asking is that the online interaction for students be limited to 20 to 30 minutes and that it be of quality in talking to, to parents. And I'll say, I really, truly do appreciate, and hopefully those parents are listening that I got to speak to today and yesterday, it was extremely helpful in having a conversation with them. And then also I had a conversation with one of our teachers just the other day and it was very helpful in speaking directly with, with her as well. You know, one mother shared with me that her child was actually engaged in, in Zoom lessons that were an hour in length. That is not what we're recommending. And so what our hope would be, based upon this and our additional training that we'll provide to our teachers, is that you're not going to see a tremendous amount of increase in the screen time, but you are going to see an increase in the quality of the online time that's spent with, with the teacher. We also have the ability to record these lessons and so for families who are not able to attend, they would be able to access these lessons on demand. So we are providing that flexibility as well.
I appreciate the clarification and I do share the concerns of a lot of those parents as a parent myself with the amount of screen time, so I do appreciate that. And just quickly, speaking to that point, you know, you talk about quality over quantity, which I think is a really important point. Some people say, well, we're, we're leaving the remote students behind. I think it's really important that people know that we are a, a family. We're a New Hanover County school family and every single student, whether they stay remote, whether they attend the Virtual Academy, whatever works best for them, they're our priority as much as any student. So we, we don't have firsts. We have 26,000 number ones and I just think that's important to point out. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And again, glad to answer any questions that you may have in regards to the schedule before I invite Dr. Jethro to come up and talk about the elementary flipped instructional model and then Mr. O'Brien to talk about the middle school and secondary flipped instructional model.
Yeah, I, I have some questions.
I never get my question answered.
I've taught middle school. I know exactly what you're talking about. I've had kids in middle school about the age-appropriate behavior or movement. There is going to be an awful lot of movement with the current recommendation for the schedule, but there's also means that they're going to be sitting down, they're going to be having each class, they're going to have to hook onto computers. There's going to be, there's going to be a lot of time because of all this movement. Movement can also take place within a classroom. I mean, that's what I used to do when I did block schedule. So there are ways to deal with that. You said you've talked to one teacher. I've heard from many teachers and I, and I'm sure, because I've talked to you too and I, I know that you sincerely want to do the absolute best and you're a lot wiser and knowledgeable than I am in many ways, but it seems to me that we need to look at less movement between classes. The core classes are important, they will stay there, but you say instructional time has to be given according to the state. What exa, I mean, there's different definitions to a certain extent of what instructional time is. So the teachers are the ones that are going to be tasked with this. And you say that you're going to give them additional time to train. School starts next week. There's a lot of concerns from teachers that I don't really feel have been articulated clearly or addressed clearly. And I would like personally, as a retired educator and as a parent, I would like to see more dialogue with the staff in the building and the teachers as far as some of these plans are going because it seems that there's an awful lot of concerns that currently can't be answered for the teachers in the class to the satisfaction for them to do their job without, another thing is over, I mean, they're literally overworked. I could, that, that's what my concern is. I'm also concerned about Wednesdays. We've had this discussion, but that in itself has to do, now we get to the safety factors, with the rooms being cleaned. Who's going to be cleaning them? There are teachers, some schools' teachers are being required to stay in the schools, other teacher, I mean, other schools are allowing their teachers to work from home on those days. There's just an awful lot of questions that are unanswered on the part, literally, of the teachers. And I, I would really like to be able to have more of this directed to answer their needs at this point because their needs are very valid and they literally are being overworked to the point that there's such burnout and fear that I'm very afraid that we're going to be losing a lot of them and the parents who support them are, are, because they care about these teachers, are, and their kids are just as concerned as I am. So can you answer any of this, maybe changing as far as the movements and the transitions and do it smarter and support some of this? I mean, literally, you're saying that they need to be trained between, for additional time in training between now and Monday and they're still trying to teach while we're talking? They're trying to put together these new schedules? Can anybody, I mean, can you answer to, you know, help this, these situations out some a little less stressful on them and families?
So, Ms. Justice, I'll answer that.
Thank you very much, Dr. Faust.
I'll, I'll be honest with you. It's, it's stressful for everyone. There's no pretty way to do a Plan B at all and we'll acknowledge that, we'll be the first to acknowledge it. What we are attempting to do is to instruct. I mean, that honestly, we have to get kids back in buildings, we've got to get teachers, make sure that there's safety protocols in place. We, we are all saying all of those things, but the number one thing is that we have to make sure that they're receiving their six-and-a-half hours of instructional time, that we are required to do. We're also required, you know, to make sure that we're providing that equitable education. So in this process, there's no way that we can have a kid sit in a classroom for two hours. There's no way, there's no way that a teacher can teach for two hours. That, I mean, even when we go to the high school, their block classes are 90 minutes, but a teacher isn't teaching for 90 minutes non-stop. Those are things that we have to consider for, for teachers and honestly be the, the eyes and the ears and look out to say, okay, well, that won't work. And so when we looked at it, that was where we made the call and I'll say, you know, I'll take it. That's why I made the call and said, we can't do it that way because that's not equitable for teachers to teach for two hours in front of kids. You, you can't have enough lesson planned in order to do that. What we have done is examined, called flipped classroom, project-based learning, and in that, that slows down the teacher talking. So I'm sure you're familiar with the Madeline Hunter approach back in the day when we were teaching. You know, so you introduce the, the lesson and you do your direct instruction. All of that should take place, hmm, probably in about 25, 30 minutes tops. And then you go into the independent practice and then you assign the work for the students. So it's not that a teacher's going to be teaching non-stop in front of that. That's not, I would never, ever recommend to any teacher, and if he or she is doing that, then we need to have some support if they're teaching non-stop for 90 minutes. That's not what we would ever incur. So we're saying literally, you're teaching talk time because what we're wanting to do and, you know, research states it and we have to go back to it, decreasing teacher talk time. And so with the, this approach, you know, this will help down the road with, we're practicing now, but it'll help down the road when we actually come back for, for teachers to say, okay, we can do the project-based learning. We can assign a lesson and then it's more of a facilitated mode where teachers are doing facilitation and that's what we will be talking about a little bit later when Dr. Jethro and Mr. O'Brien comes up in front of us. But we want to make sure that people understand that you can't teach for two hours. You can't.
I wasn't talking about that. I was talking about exactly what you're talking about within a two-hour framework. You teach, then you do the projects right there. You move around, you do things. I'm talking about moving from class to class in those short increments as compared to the longer ones that were requested. I'm talking about moving from class to class in those short increments as compared to the longer ones that were requested. So I never would expect a teacher to teach. In fact, that would put kids to sleep in the first 15 minutes.
So you also have to understand that in order for certification methods, not all teachers are certified in math, science. I mean, you know that. So we have to be able to move kids at the secondary level to make sure that they are getting it from the certified teacher of record. That we do have to do, so we can't keep them in a section for that time without them moving. And then, of course, you know, with the scheduling at the secondary, kids have different levels of where they're going to the different math classes, the different sci- there's a schedule that abides by that. And then, of course, we want to meet the needs of those students. It's a little different at the secondary, secondary buildings.
Quite well, I've been in them longer than there in my career than the others. Okay, well, thank you for these answers. I, what we can do under the circumstances. I do believe that these voices of the teachers are very valid in many ways, and I would please, I know you're listening to a certain extent, but I keep hearing, I don't hear their voices as much as I feel would be necessary considering the input we need from them right now, because they're the actual experts, and they're the ones that are putting in all this extra stressful work. And I think they've got a lot more wisdom than just about, than anybody else in the building when it comes to teaching our kids.
And we're not discounting anything that the teachers are saying. We know that we have some sound instructional practitioners, we do know that. What we're attempting to do is, of course, implement the policy statutes to make sure that they fall in, because we don't want teachers to have to worry about that.
Dr. Smith, you mentioned that the Zoom meetings, and that was my question about the Zoom meetings being recorded, the class Zoom meetings. Where will they be located, and will they be available to all students?
The recorded meetings would be located in teachers' particular LMS, Learning Management System, for their class. So if they're high school and they're using Canvas, if they're middle school and they're using Google Classroom, that's where those would be located. And they're only accessible to the students in that particular classroom.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And at this time, if there aren't any more questions, I'd like to invite Dr. Jethro to come up and speak specifically to the elementary flip model, and then followed by Mr. O'Brien.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board members, face-to-face and in Zoom. It's good to see all of you again. For elementary, for kindergarten through fifth grade, the New Hanover County Schools' flipped instructional method will really look like the new learning, the new instruction continuing every day. So whether you are face-to-face or whether you are remote, that new concurrent instruction will continue. And we know that the remote instruction is still very important. Even if the child is coming back on AA or BB, the other three days, they are remote. And it's also important for us to continue and keep up with that pacing. On the face-to-face instructional days, however, the teachers will be able to lead a deeper investigation of previously taught standards or the new priority standards that are part of that pacing of instruction. They will also be able to assess face-to-face the students' learning and intervene with the children face-to-face, and then even prepare them for their next set of remote days. So for us, it's really about leveraging for K-5 the face-to-face time. One thing more that I could say, and then Mr. O'Brien elaborated about secondary, is that as part of the new concurrent instruction that will continue on a daily basis, that will be synchronous and asynchronous. It will include the daily social-emotional learning, which we know is important all the time, but especially during this time. The daily phonics instruction, because that phonics instruction builds on itself each day. And then, as I said, the daily introduction to the new core material. So we would not want to leave any of those things out.
Thank you, Dr. Jethro. And Dr. Jethro and I work in tandem so much, we actually build our presentation that we used with the principals, when we train principals, we work together to build that out together. So much of what you've already heard is very similar to the secondary schools. That being said, we've trained principals, they've had the opportunity to sit through a training, and we're also asking our principals to lead this training in the building, because we know that they're our instructional leader, they're our principal teacher, right? That's where that word principal came from, the principal teacher. And so we are asking them to lead that professional development and to lead this initiative in our schools. So that is something that K-12, we are looking to do. I think it's important to recognize how hard our teachers are working to make this happen. Dr. Faust is absolutely correct, this is hard work, and this is going to be a lift for our teachers. And so the other thing that we need to mention is that our instructional lead teachers will be pushing in to support our schools as they go through this process. So not only have we designed a training for them, we want to make sure that we're supporting them as we try to roll this training out. So as soon as tomorrow, I know we have some of our lead teachers going into schools to support teachers in helping them to become more comfortable with the rollout. I kind of see the flipped instructional method as sort of the anchor that we're grabbing onto. It's an instructional practice that we want to build around. It doesn't mean that other great instructional practices are going to be pushed away or are not going to happen. We want those to continue, but this is the anchor in which we're trying to build and link all of this to, so that we have a consistent way across the district, so that we are making sure that all of our students have an equitable opportunity to receive instruction in a very similar way. So those are just some of the follow-up points. But in terms of the flipped method, you know, there is some work that is done prior to the students coming to class. And then, like Dr. Jethro pointed out, there will be that opportunity for higher-level learning to occur in those face-to-face sessions. And it also could be that we do want to move through concurrently, and we want to make sure that we're progressing through the curriculum. When I think about the high school curriculum at this point, you know, our first end of the year is in December. That's when we will have final exams, so that's right around the corner. So we need to progress through the standards so that we can be ready for that. And we want to support teachers as they do that, but it's important for us to keep in mind that we do need to progress through. But it also doesn't mean that we can't repeat a high-level impactful instructional activity that happened on Monday and Tuesday. That could happen again on a Thursday and Friday, if that's something that the teacher needs to do. But we do want them to move through continuously through the standards so that we are making progress. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding that.
What challenges do we anticipate for the students learning this model?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear your question.
I said, what challenges do we anticipate for the students learning this model?
I think that with any model, whether it's face-to-face or whether it is in a Plan B scenario, I think that, you know, we always face that situation where students might not be prepared when they come into the class. And that happens in a Plan A, but that's also going to happen in a Plan B. So, and what we would do would be the same. We're going to try to meet kids where they are. If they come in and for some reason they haven't had the opportunity to prep or prepare, then we're going to try to meet them where they are and bring them along in that class period as well. So that's not new, but we do anticipate some challenges, because it's new for our students. I mean, we've done the Plan C now for a while. I would say that our teachers have done a great job with that, so I'm sure that they will continue with that. I think the other challenge will be, you know, just making sure that we keep in mind that we're teaching to two groups, at least for a short period of time. I think like Dr. Smith alluded to, 20 minutes for the middle school is probably what we're looking for for a Zoom period to last, and at the high school level, we're saying no more than 30 minutes, because we recognize that having them on all day continuously on a Zoom, 8:30 to 3:30, is not best practice.
So, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. On Monday and Tuesday, my child goes to school, they're in person, and they're getting the instruction. On Thursday and Friday, when they're home, can they Zoom in and hear this instructions from Thursday and Friday?
Yes, ma'am, that is the plan, that we would have concurrent sessions going on. So, and again, it wouldn't be for the full 90 minutes, Ms. Nichols, it would be for the first part of the class. So for example, at a high school class, it might be the first 30 minutes. They would be going over the previous learning. And then at some point, that lesson would stop where they're covering the material with both groups of students. And then the students that are remote would have assignments to go work on asynchronously from home. And then the teacher would have the opportunity to, you know, dive deeper into those standards with the students that they have in the face-to-face model. And then they would progress through the week, making sure that we were continually moving through the standards so that we were progressing through the curriculum.
And how are we assessing them to ensure that they are ready to move on?
So assessment in a lot of ways would look the same. You know, certainly there are online assessments that students have been participating in in Plan C. We would continue with some of that. There may be some opportunity for assessment in the face-to-face portion of the class. However, you know, I think that we would look to try to maximize our face-to-face time with best instructional practices and probably a little bit less on assessment. So assessments could happen on Wednesdays, or they could also happen in the remote setting as well. So I think what we will see, in all honesty, Ms. Nichols, is probably a little bit of all three of those.
Thank you.
Do we have a, have we talked about, and I mean, this is not instructional at all, but sports? Do we have a plan for fall sports?
I'd love to talk about sports.
I almost hate to talk about that, but I know for some of our students, for some of our students, that is a big deal. And I just didn't know if we have a plan for that yet, for fall sports.
We do, and we're following the direction of the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. And again, I really have to tip my hat to our teachers, coaches, athletic directors, and we are blessed to have athletic trainers in this county, thank you guys for that. And so they've done a great job with taking care of kids, making sure that we don't have spread scenarios. We've had a few positive cases, as you guys know, but they've done a great job. We've not had a spread scenario. But just this week, we followed the association's direction of allowing the higher limits of students, so they can now have 50 outside and 25 in the gymnasium. We are looking right now, and actually we're meeting this week to take a look at what weight room usage would look like. But yes, ma'am, we are scheduled to start November 4th is the official tryout date for actually the high school programs, and also the middle school programs would more than likely start at that point. We're not quite as far down the road with middle school yet, but we're making good progress there, so. So yes, ma'am, we are on target to go at that point, as long as everything continues to go well.
Thank you. And I would just like to point out that this mask is in no way a statement of fandom of any kind. I'm neutral and in support of all of our area high schools. Somebody just handed it to me today, so happy to represent.
I think most of us probably have masks from all of the different schools. So as soon as you walk in, they're happy to give you one, so yeah, so anyway. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is this, is part two? So we are welcoming Eddie Anderson, our Assistant Superintendent of Operations and Planning. And Mr. Anderson, there have been many, many, many questions and emails about how are we cleaning our schools? And what does this look like?
Thank you and good evening.
We appreciate you being here to talk about this.
In addition to giving out, you know, guidance, procedures, processes, and all the information, which we're just overloaded with, I appreciate the emails, because that's a direct way for me to answer those questions, provide good, accurate information, and hopefully alleviate fears and build confidence that our schools are ready. But before I get into cleaning, I just want to tell you, I've been giving you updates on child nutrition, transportation, and facilities. Our school kitchens are ready, they're serving meals every day. They're following the procedures, staff is in the building. Under the Plan B, it's a school-based decision if they want students eating in the cafeteria versus eating in their classrooms. I've been out to schools, schools are doing it different ways, schools are considering different options. Our meal program throughout, Plan B will continue. We're going to be serving meals Monday through Friday at school, curbside, and at, well, we have 30 schools that are participating, as well as 24 neighborhood stops. And just a reminder for not only you, but to the public and parents that may be listening, through December 31st of this year, we are still participating in the summer food service program. So that means all children, regardless, all children 18 years of age or younger eat for free breakfast and lunch. So we're really happy that the federal waiver was extended, and who knows? When we get closer to the end of the year, maybe we'll find that that's extended again. Transportation has been probably the most challenging, getting these bus routes established. You know, with a change to an AABB model caused parents and schools to change their planning, rethink how they were approaching things. And so even today, we were getting changes. So it's been difficult, but you know, the transportation staff, they have stayed on it. And we will be finalizing routes and stops tomorrow. When they are, we'll be posting them online, and our school websites will have links to those bus routes and stops. We had our kickoff meeting with, and training with our drivers and with monitors, and transportation is ready. They are ready, they're excited. They are ready. However, this year will look different. These are things that we've talked about before, but the parent guardian attestation form is required. You know, we're going to, we're going to be working through that with parents the first week I know. And we're going to have extras, and we're going to provide them to students, and we're going to get them filled out, we're going to get them signed, and we're going to make this transportation process work smoothly. Face masks are required. If they show up and they don't have a face mask, we're going to provide them one. So again, we got to, it's going to take a while to get everybody on a routine, and we're going to work with students and work with parents and families to make that happen. We've talked about our reduced bus capacity. So because of that, the biggest change families are probably going to see when we establish these routes is there are going to be far fewer stops. We're really moving towards more community stops, and that is key. Our routes have got to be short and fast, and we will be doubling up, and buses will be running multiple runs. 24 students on a bus, we go to some bus stops and have to more than 24 students at a stop. So we're going to pick up as many as we can, and we're going to drop them off, and we're going to come right back. Schools have to be flexible, families, parents, and we all have to be flexible to make that happen. The nice thing about all that is it's going to result in shorter ride times. So perhaps a little further to walk to the bus stop, shorter time on the bus, shorter time, you know, in close proximity with people, so that's a good thing. Our facilities are ready. Over the past two to three weeks, I have really had the pleasure of visiting schools and assisting teachers and administrators in setting up their school for reopening. And it has been, it's been great. It's put, it's given me a different perspective on reopening and actually gotten me excited about it, because teachers are excited about it. Teachers are awesome, they are so creative. You go into classrooms and you see what, how they've set things up, and they've thought through so many things that a lot of times I have not thought through. And I'll say, "That is so cool," I say, "Let me take a picture of that." And so I take a picture, and we put it on our, in our folder, and we share it. So there's videos, there's pictures, there's guidance documents, and we're sharing with all the schools to hopefully, hopefully that's been, you know, helped them. And we're sharing with all the schools to hopefully, hopefully, that's been a, you know, helped them in getting their facilities set up. Distributed, installed at all the schools, you know, signage, floor markings, thermometers, hand sanitizer, PPE. We have processes and procedures in place. Most every school I've been to have checklist that they've done such a great job of printing out and posting. Staff have been trained, and again, you know, school, the schools are ready for students. I know we're ready. I'm confident of that. However, I also know that, you know, day one, week one, month one, Plan A, Plan B, things are gonna happen. And we're gonna have to adapt. And we all recognize that. And the the most critical thing is that we're we're prepared for that. And 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 we are. I mean, I feel like I feel like at least, you know, the school staff have shown that they are. The only, the only concern that I've heard that I'd really like to address, which you asked that it be put on the board agenda, is that there's a disinfecting product that teachers would, we've provided for teachers to disinfect between classes. Or maybe an elementary level when their students go to the lunchroom, or they go to recess, or, you know, when they're out of the classroom for a while. The product that we're using is the Hilliard QT Plus Twenty-Four. Hilliard is the vendor that we use for all our custodial cleaning. And they have a product that is consistent with our custodial command centers at at every school. So that we can buy that product in bulk. And so we provided all of the spray bottles and rags to the schools. I think the, I think the initial concern, I'm not sure, but I think the initial concern over that product is that someone surfed in the internet, pulled the wrong safety data sheet, and it spread. The safety data sheet that was shared with me was not for the product that we're using. We're using the QT Plus Twenty-Four. The product that I've seen was the was the concentrated form. The Twenty-Four is the diluted form. And when I say diluted, it's one part of the disinfectant to one hundred and twenty-eight parts of water. So it's significantly diluted. There is a separate safety data sheet for that. That has been not only shared with the principals, shared with those that have contacted me or others. But it's as as with any product we use in our school system, it's also available online on the MSDS online program. And it's also available in hard copy in the book at each and every facility where the product's being used. I know that that has not addressed all concerns. So we consulted with the health department. We provided product information to the health department, and they concurred that the product is safe. The safety data sheet says that there are no hazardous ingredients. It's safe to use. They only recommend that, as with using any other cleaning product, you wash your hands after use. However, there's, and I did mention that there's no PPE recommended or required. However, we did provide PPE to the teachers and staff that that would like to use gloves. Of course, they have face masks, and they have face shields, you know, in case they're concerned with the product maybe splashing in their eyes. You wouldn't want any cleaning product to do that. We've also, we also do have some other products in our warehouse, and we've made those available. Unfortunately, the Clorox wipes, they're out of stock and backordered, but we do have Lysol wipes, and they are available. And there's a citrus-based product that we're looking at. It's on the EPA's approved list of products, and we're looking at at making that available as well. The the other concern I've had with cleaning is I don't know how Wednesdays became known as a deep cleaning day. We we deep clean every day. We clean and disinfect our schools every day. Wednesdays will be no different. We will clean and disinfect on Wednesdays, just like we're doing on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. The only thing that we do differently during the week, besides our cleaning and disinfecting daily, is in between student groups. We will use an electrostatic mister to to mist those rooms. And we'll do that in the evenings, not because it's a safety concern, because it's using the same QT Plus product at the same diluted ratio. But it does have a dwell time, so when you spray it, you want it to lay on those surfaces for a set amount of time and not to disturb it to get the maximum benefit of the product. So custodian can go in the room, spray a room, classroom, in probably less than a minute, and then he's done. You just just leave the product, let it sit, let it dry naturally, and you'll get the best and maximum benefit out of those products. The other concern I've heard is that the Hilliard QT is a pesticide. That's true. It is. So are Clorox wipes. So are Lysol wipes. And so are any other products that are used to commonly clean mold and mildew. See, the EPA classifies insecticides and fungicides as pesticides. So it, while that is, that is a true statement, but so are a lot of the the common household products that we use each and every day. Doesn't mean it's hazardous. It's just the way the EPA classifies those products. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have. And hopefully, this'll answer answers a lot of your questions and and puts to rest some of your some of your fears.
Can I go back to the buses to start from the beginning where you started?
Yes, ma'am.
Bus driver, all right. By the way, thanks a lot. You're doing a real good job. I mean, everybody is, obviously. Thank goodness.
Thank you.
But there are some questions. Now, the bus drivers originally way back when, when we were talking about this whole process, were going to take the temperatures of the students. And I think I asked this last time. So this will no longer be going on before they board the bus?
That is correct. And and I'll tell you why that change was made. First of all, I think the the regulation changed. I think the state recognized that that was, it was really not feasible. And so the, they they allowed the attestation form. And they they then allowed it to go from daily to, you know, a yearly attestation. And the the reason I think that that's a better plan, you know, first and foremost, whether you're riding a bus, you're walking, or in a car. You know, good, good, safe health practices do start at home and taking a temperature and and checking the symptoms of your child before they leave the house. We definitely want to to do that on the bus. But the other thing is, if, well, let me, that that is really just the first step. So when students arrive at school and they're they're getting, they're going through the screening process, that is step one. You know, they're not medical professor professionals. They're they're following very strict procedures. And if if a if a child temperature over one hundred point four, or they present symptoms, then they're directed to the nurse. So the nurse can further exam examine them to see if maybe they were just hot from walking to school. Maybe there's something else that's going on. Our bus drivers, we don't want to put them in that position of being the screener and school nurse. And we don't want to put them in the position of having to tell elementary students that they're not allowed on the bus, that they need to go home, when we don't know if there's someone at home waiting for them. We have those resources at the school. And so the attestation form allows us to safely transport those students to school where we have those resources. And and then if if we do have to call a parent, we, you know, the child can wait safely while we have someone pick them up.
The only problem, and I, all that's practical. And and the only thing that I would say, say a child is getting on the bus coughing, obviously, not well. And you can't send them home. You just said that yourself because you don't know if there's anybody there to receive them. Is there anything in place on the bus to isolate the child in such a section so that they couldn't, if they might have something that could be contagious, COVID? Is there someplace on the bus that they can be seated so that they're less likely to, say, infect an adult, which is more susceptible, or other childrens? Because they're all very important. Has anything been discussed about that?
Absolutely. And I I think I think that one of the reasons that the state lessen the requirements for social distancing on the bus is considering the height of the seats, considering the fact that all students are seated one to a seat facing the same direction. And that they're all wearing face masks. So the likelihood of, you know, any transmission of the of the disease or anything else is significantly reduced. However, we also know that, you know, face masks protect others from you. So this is protecting you from me. The best way to protect yourself and others is wear in combination a face mask and a face shield. And so both of those are being offered to the drivers. Face masks are required. That's not our requirement, but that's a requirement of the state. But given what we know about face shields worn with face masks, we've also offered face masks to all of our bus drivers, monitors, and aides.
Realistic to possibly be able to purchase M ninety-five so they can protect from the outside and the inside? I'm sure you probably discussed that. For all staff, actually.
Well, we have not because, you know, the the guidance we've been given is that, you know, the three-ply face mask is the best protection. You know, that we can provide our our employees and others. And that the the more medical-grade face mask and and supplies really need to be reserved for just that, you know, medical institutions and staff.
But there's still a shortage of some kind at this point? I'm just curious.
I, I think there is. I mean, and I said, we we still aren't able to get Clorox wipes.
All right, that makes sense. Also, I know I've got questions here. I was jotting down. There are, once teachers and the students are in the classroom, we are, we doing the distance protocol with six feet apart in all classes?
Yes, ma'am, we are.
Okay, so, well, that's good to hear. I'm glad to hear that. What about in the hallway? I don't even know if this is necessarily the question to ask you, but is it gonna be teachers in the hallway monitoring while they're supposed to be cleaning their classes whilst children are transitioning from one class to the other at the same time? Is, how is that gonna be possible for them to wipe down when they leave and also be out in the hall? Is there some kind of process in place so that both of those things can be done? Because kids being kids, they're gonna need, you know, some kind of direction if they start to get too close, if their horse playing, pulling the mask off?
Yeah, that's a good question, and we've had some conversation with our secondary principal about that. Some transition times have been extended and to allow that. Per the guidance, we've we've, a lot of the schools are closing the restrooms during transition because we don't want groups of students gathering, you know, in in the in the restroom. We have signage, we have arrows on the floor, we have, you know, stand here, wait here markers. So during all that, certain staff are assigned to, you know, do exactly what you say, you know, observe and kind of supervise students during those transition times. And remind them to, you know, continue to wear their mask and 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 promote social distancing. Some facilities, if they're large enough and it's a, and it and it works, there's one-way hallways. In other cases, there may be one-way stairwells. So I I think we've put in place a lot of things that make it easier for students to do what they're supposed to do and for staff to supervise that.
Sounds like probably the longer time in between would cover, you know, a lot of that. Also, let me see here. Well, if anybody else has any questions right now, I'm just looking to see what I was jotting down, because I jotted down several.
I have one for you, Ms. Anderson.
Yes, ma'am.
With the car riders, are they going to be tested before they get out of the vehicle?
I I believe so. I'm looking over at Ms. Barnum, and so you have permission to throw something at me if I speak incorrectly. But, yeah, car riders would be screened at the car. So if they're, if they had a high temperature or presented symptoms, their parents or guardians could take them back home.
So our parents are gonna need to know that they're not just going to be able to drop the student off and then leave without having permission for that child to enter the school. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that's gonna be a learning curve for a lot of parents because they're used to being able to drop them off and make their schedule for their work or appointment. So this is something that they need to know in advance.
Yeah, you're exactly right, and I I think it's gonna be, you know, a learning curve for a lot of us. It'll, I would say to parents that are dropping off their kids, you know, plan, start early and and plan a little extra time because it will take you a little extra time to get through that process.
Are we providing, are we providing Plexiglas shields for any of the teachers that are instructing? Some of them are possibly at higher risk than others. Are we open to that?
Well, if if a if a staff person, teacher, has requested an accommodation, then that may be part of the accommodation. But, you know, on a on a, you know, normal basis, we are not providing the Plexiglas shields. Again, the, I don't know how you teach from one location. Teachers, I've seen a lot of them move all over the classroom. And 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 the Plexiglas shield in a large setting like that really doesn't provide as much protection for you and others as as a face mask and face shield would. And we have provided both of those things to all teachers and staff.
Have they all come in? Have we been able to distribute it? School starts on Monday.
Yeah. Are the face shields, face shields in?
Not all of them in, but we do have face shields that are in person.
Yes, face shields are being donated by one of our community partners. Not all of them are in, but they are available in the in the warehouse. All other PPEs in terms of, you know, gloves, masks, hand sanitizers, all of those things have been distributed and are in our schools now.
Somebody hasn't received them yet? It's just a matter of have them requesting it from their administrator?
Absolutely. If if someone, let's let's just, if a teacher hasn't received those items, they need to go to their principal or assistant principal, whoever handles that facility, and and request those items. They have been distributed to all the schools. And if for some reason, you know, didn't make it to their classroom, yeah, they need to, they need to know about it so they can get it to them.
By the way, I know I keep peppering you with questions. I appreciate you having patience and giving answers.
Just quickly, Ms. Anderson, you alluded to it, the work that you've seen. I've been through twelve schools, and I was gonna wait until, you know, the announcements at the end to say something, but since it might be eleven o'clock. I definitely want to, all the schools I've been to, yeah, I've heard a lot of concerns. One consistent praise is the praise for our custodial staff. They are doing an absolutely amazing job, and I don't care what school it is. I know several, several faculties have tried to do something for them. I know Blair did something for theirs recently. But I just wanted to recognize them because I don't think it's ever a waste of time to say thanks. We are, we are a team, and man, they are really doing an amazing job from top to bottom. We are, we are a team, and man, they are really doing an amazing job from top to bottom. So I just wanted to take this moment to say thank you to them and to your entire team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I really appreciate that, and I know they do.
I mean it.
Also, I want to say to, we had the ceremony last week, but I wanna, again, let everyone know that child nutrition did serve over, they have served over a million meals since COVID has started, so that's worth another shout out. That's amazing.
It is. I appreciate you all having that event, and, you know, the McDonald's actually provided breakfast for our bus drivers and child nutrition staff that participated in that program, and that was really nice. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, before we go into policies for first reading, we are going to take a five-minute break to stretch our legs and use the facilities. We will be back at 8:47.